Testing.
Good evening. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025. We're at the Green Ladel and we'll call the meeting to order at 5:34 PM. And start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start introductions with Counselor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donna Galant, Ward 7.
Iman Asman, Ward 5.
Craig Sharpton's here, Ward 4.
Elizabeth Eames, Ward 3.
Janet Bowden, Ward 2.
Phoenix McGlaughlin, Ward 1.
Megan Parks, At Large.
Jake Langley, Superintendent.
Karen Paquette, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Agenda item number four is public input. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Speakers must adhere to our public comment policy BEDH, which is available at the back of the room or on the LPS website. These meetings exist to conduct school committee business. The purpose of public comment is to share thoughts on school and educational matters. Committee members and school staff will not reply during this time. Comments must be directed to the chair and be civil. By law, comments may not pertain to specific staff or students. Comments about individuals must be directed privately to the appropriate LPS staff. Student privacy must be maintained. The public comment period is 30 minutes unless extended due to unusual circumstances. Priority goes to Lewiston residents and parents, students, or employees of LPS. Before starting, please state your name, town or city of residence, and affiliation to LPS. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Matthew Aker, Ward 4. As our new school year is starting, I want to start off by offering my congratulations for the partnership with the Maine Education Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing that will end our deaf and hard-of-hearing students having to travel multiple hours for specialized school programs. This keeps them in-house instead, which fits with the Lewiston school system's plan to bring as many possible special needs students back within our school system. Well done. To be honest, this is a group of students that I truly thought the cost to bring them back in-house for these programs would be higher than the cost than it would be to send them to the former Baxter School for the Deaf because of such specialized programming. I do have questions about this, as the article in the Sun Journal indicates that there's talk about expanding this to all of Angostogon County's students that they have. Do we know how many students that could be? And do we, as a school system, have space for that many students extra within the program? My next question slash comment is, as we start our new school year, how many of our school positions are unfilled with permanent staff? What was our retention rate from last year looking like? Because I feel one of the goals for this school system should be, how many staff can we retain year to year? Let's be honest, keeping your staff shows the system is successful. If you're regularly turning over all your staff, you have problems somewhere within the organization that needs to be addressed. And I know last year, we had Luke Jensen, as the school year was ending, in here telling us what, as a teacher in our school system, he experienced as issues and why he was stepping down as a teacher. I don't know if this has been done, if not, it needs to be, but to spend time identifying factors and shortcomings that might undermine our staff and how we recruit others. Hopefully via exit interviews and surveys, we can find out why we're seeing turnover of staff. And something we don't always think of, because they're not the squeaky wheel or the problem ones, but ask, why are current teachers stay with us? Because, let's be honest, they're staying. They have to have a reason. We don't think always to address these people because they aren't the problem or the squeaky wheel. We always deal with, okay, got to deal with a squeaky wheel. They're fine, they're fine. Well, eventually, they won't be fine if you don't deal with them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 5 to receive and potentially vote on the field trip request to Merrimack College and Endicott College in Massachusetts.
Hello, my name is Rachel Moore. I'm the Director of Student Services, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about the field trip. It's the same one we took last year. The kids really enjoyed it, and we're excited to go again.
I just want to add too, so right now, we have a standing piece that if it's an annual component, it doesn't have to come before the committee, but it does leave the state. So wanted to just put on the table, if you don't feel the need to hear these every year because it's the same trip they've done, and it's within the day, it's not an overnight, there's no water activity. Kate and Rachel were curious what the committee's standing would be on that. So that wouldn't have to come next year necessarily, because it's in policy to allow for annual trips.
Remember Eames?
I guess we don't have to vote on it, but I'd kind of like to know maybe in a summary form at some point, what's happened, what they are when they're annual. But I can see why we wouldn't necessarily have to vote every time.
Just like an update that these are occurring, but without a vote?
Right, to know that they are going to colleges, for instance.
Yeah. Remember Bowden?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think we should vote on it because it's on the agenda, and she's here tonight. So we might as well vote on it tonight. But moving forward, I mean, I wholeheartedly approve this trip every single year. I think it's wonderful, and it gives our students a chance to go out and see colleges that maybe they wouldn't be able to see on their own. So I think it's a great thing, and I'm fine with it just going through every year if it's the same every year. But the next school committee might not be, so I mean, maybe bring that up in January when you have a new school committee. But I'll make the motion to approve this if there's no other comments. Go ahead. Member Galant, go ahead.
Question, is the trips, do they rotate colleges, or do they go to the same colleges every year? And do other colleges, are there other trips, or is this the only one?
So we have six trips. This is the only one out of state. And we go based on student interests and colleges that are close to each other, and a lot of coordination of who can take us and where we can eat lunch. But this is the one that goes out of state every year, and it's to Merrimack and Endicott. Leave at 6:30 in the morning, and the kids come. So it's good, it's worth it.
Member Bowden?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this field trip to Merrimack College and Endicott College in Massachusetts.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is to receive an update on, sorry, an update from school administration sharing some items from the start of the school year.
Well, over the last couple of weeks, I've feel that a lot of questions of, what are people doing in this school, that school, whatnot? And I thought the best people to share a little bit about the startup of the start of this school year would be. Testing. I think we got it. Would be to have our administrators, who are kicking off the year, come share some things that they're doing. The pulse right now feels really good. We've been in all of our schools as things have started up and gotten running. But there's a lot of effort that goes into that. And so instead of just me saying it, I wanted to invite some folks to come share their thoughts. And if you have questions for them, feel free.
Are they coming up in order?
We have some slides that we're going to share at the same time. So it looks like Deb's going to come talk about Connors first.
I did it. I didn't need help this time. Thank you. Good evening. As you know, I think for me, the start for the year felt very different than last year because I knew my people. Last year was my first year, so that was always our just getting, not knowing your people. So standing in front of my staff and just knowing, knowing my staff, knowing my people, and with the great hiring that we did this summer was definitely a great feel. As you know, I always refer to us as the Connors Champions, and that has definitely resonated into this year, and will always be part of our mindset and who we are. And we're in it together, and together is always better. I'm very excited because I feel that the expectations and routines and things that we set forth from last year have really resonated into this following year, which has, we've really had a smooth start. I've had several staff come to me and tell me it's been the smoothest start since Connors has opened, and it's with the collective impact that we're all working together. With my message this year has been on one team, because we are on one team, and no one can do this on their own, not me at all. One team will always be stronger than one person. We are stronger than one classroom, than one idea, and we work together. I started out the year reflecting on bright spots of 24-25, all our students. I feel like they're my students, my staff, my champions. They all wrote down on index cards their own bright spots, and you can see the themes that they came out with. And we started the year strong, reminding us of the great work that we do. Every child belongs, the joy in learning in school life, growth that matters, championing champions for each other, community and relationships. Due to tracking of interventions last year, we were able to get a head start running on with groupings and interventions, and really providing the targeted supports that we need for our students. So that's been a great start. I also just want to highlight, one of the things you'll see on the bottom, I have another example here, we started doing team photos and messages, so the community can really get to know who we are as a team. So we are working on that, and those are my new secretaries. I do have quite a bit of new staff, and those are my new secretaries. I wish I could read that to you, but I really can't. But they have their nice little blurb, and we will be posting it on Facebook and our website once everything's all done. For first grade, for example, it's the first grade team, and it says, "We're so excited for an amazing year. Our team teaches the whole child, loves to have fun, and supports every student to be a champion. Get ready for hands-on learning, laughter, and lots of growth. Together, we will make this year unforgettable." The first grade team. So that, again, going with one team. You will see, I also put in our new special transportation dismissal procedures, which has been great. So I changed up how we dismiss for special transportation, and you can see a new stop sign and some signage out there where we dismiss in a different location to make it smoother and increase safety for all students. So that has been going very well. And all staff have emergency response bags. My staff know, we talk a lot about safety, and they all have their own emergency response bags now. And we've been talking a lot about safety drills. We've already had safety drills and that kind of thing. In the upper right-hand corner, you will see our, it was our SCL implementation work that we were doing this year, and a book study that we're doing on teaching self-discipline. You'll see my assistant principal Travis is up there, quite entertaining, and really talked about defining relationships, building a shared language. And a question that we had staff leave with is, what's a shift that you could bring to your practice, or an actionable step to take with you? And just, I just want to share a couple. I know I'm over my two minutes, but it's really getting us to think as educators, what can we do differently? And they talked about slowing down and taking time to teach and practice routines, model, model, model throughout the whole school year. Acknowledged student strengths, tone and voice, and the silent modeling and positive spin on negatives, matching my tone and volume. Teachers and staff, they're really taking a look at their practice and doing what's best for students. And of course, our class charters, you'll see down on the bottom right-hand corner, and those are all up and running. So it's been a great start. And that was more than two minutes, sorry. I like the idea of an emergency response bag, but what's in it? So it's called, well, in the emergency response bag, they have Band-Aids, and they have gloves, and they're going to put their emergency signs, like the all-clear, like the lockdown procedures, those kinds of things, class list, everything that they need for, to leave for a fire drill, if there's an evacuation, and we meet as an emergency team anyway, to kind of see like the different things that we want to put in the bag. I have some students who are diabetic, so some of those classrooms, they have snacks in those bags for those students, thought that that was necessary just in case if, you know, there's more of an evacuation or something we need to do. That's really helped, I think, make staff feel safer and students feel safer. And it's consistent when we think about subs in the building and everything. It's just consistent, so we know where the bag is. It's consistent across all classrooms.
Hey, everyone. So we started this year off with a lot of excitement and energy and community spirit with our new staff swag that we got all our staff to start building a sense of community and belonging. From the first day, students have really jumped right into building a sense of family and belonging, helping each other with kind words, showing responsibilities, reflecting what our core values are at Farwell. We are proud to share some of the highlights and updates that strengthen our school community. For example, we are implementing two co-teaching classrooms in kindergarten with multilingual students and multilingual staff. Shout out for our main Center for Deaf and Hard of Hearing classroom. We have one classroom so far, about six to eight students in that class that are mainstreamed into the gen ed setting with interpreters, with ed techs. It's been a great transition, pretty smooth for all the students involved. Our custodial staff worked super hard this summer to get our building and fields. Our new field out back was maintained, so students are ready to use it this fall for soccer and football and whatever else they choose. Last year, we really adapted our vision and mission. So our goal this year is for everyone to pounce. We're creating our opportunities for everyone to pounce into their dreams. If you did not know, a group of Bobcats is called a Pounce, so that's why we kind of tied it that way. But yeah, we're excited. The best part is having the kids in the building and seeing their smiling face every morning as they walk in.
Good evening. Same as everyone else, it's been a great start to the school year. I feel like in all the years I've been doing this, this has felt like the smoothest and most exciting start to the school year. I think that starts with my strong team too. My two APs are here tonight. I've told them a million times they didn't have to come, but they still wanted to come to support. And for those of you, a lot of people get it, but so much goes into the summer work to make for that smooth start, and I have them to thank for so much that happened this summer to get to us to where we are now. So our team is number one on our smooth start, like our, everyone. I mean, that goes to everyone. Classrooms were ready. Classrooms just look amazing. Our custodial team just went above and beyond this summer. And the building just looked so wonderful to walk into. It was so welcoming, it's so welcoming. Staff was ready to go. Some highlights, we are continuing with our co-teaching for special education in grades five and six, and we have started some co-teaching in grade one with our multilingual students. Looking at the data, some of our behavior data, we had a really high number in grade one, and some of that is just the amount of transitions kids have all day long. And those teams, we have it in three of our first grade classrooms, and they're co-teaching with our level ones and twos. And they had their first planning session this week, and they blew us away. We walked out of that meeting like, that is exactly what we wanted to see, and they just did it. They jumped right into it. Our MTSS, our two content coaches run our MTSS. We don't have a person for that, so they do that. And they had that up and running, and groups started right away last week, and that's both for academic groups and social emotional groups. So parents were thrilled to hear that kids were already in groups and working on the skills they needed to continue from last year. And we have a quote from a parent there that we got that was just appreciative of that and the smooth transition coming over. And then our school nurse went above and beyond. I know Karen sent an email to her today, just getting set up with using docket this year with immunizations, like got us, got me on board this summer, like gave me my own little training, our school secretaries, just to get students running. And I know she has supported nurses across the district, so just a shout out to her. I do have a little link on there, so if you have access to it, we have a little video there that if you, I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook or not, but it just kind of introduces our team. It's a fun little video. You don't need to play it tonight because two-minute limit, and that will go over it. But you can watch it later. It's fun, and it just introduces all of our teachers, kind of in a fun way. We shared it with families, so. Thank you.
Hello. So I want to echo what everybody else has said about the start of the school year. I think adding that day on Friday for teachers to come in and just work in their room really helped us all feel prepared. That bottom picture is a whole staff picture of all of our staff, but I wanted to also highlight that my roofing project is now complete. So you can see the calf ceiling, and it just looks really nice. And the lighting, they updated the lighting, so you can dim it. It can be really bright, or it can be dim during times that it needs to be quiet. It's been, it's added to the space, and it looks really great. So, and I'm happy to have a dry school. In addition, we updated our primary playground, and so that just was opened on Thursday. So a little slow start to the beginning of the year. We had to be flexible and adjust with not using that space for a little bit, but it is up and running. And I do want to give a huge shout out to the facilities crew because they worked really hard to make sure I had it as soon as I could have it. So Thursday morning, wood chips were delivered at 5:00 AM, and by 10:30, kids were on the playground. So that has been a huge highlight for us at McMahon. We had our first whole-school assembly where we reviewed character traits, the five castle competencies around self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and strong relationship skills. If students demonstrate these frequently, their teachers can nominate them to be student of the month, where they can, their picture is taken, and it's displayed outside my office for the month that they become student of the month. And we've partnered with Horace Mann, so they get a $5 Dunkin' card too. So that's a pretty big hit. We started that last year, and so we're ready to get those nominations, and kids are excited. Our tiger makes appearance at the assemblies, and we let sixth-grade students be the tiger. And so I just love that picture because there's a sixth-grade student in there, and that's her sixth-grade friend giving her a hug. I just feel like they're so excited to be at the top and be good role models for our school. That kind of captures how, what it's felt like to start the school year so far. Our special purpose programs are growing. We have two riserooms now, so we had one last year, and we've added another. And then Klein has added another classroom. So we're at six classrooms for Klein, and so that's been going really well. Thanks.
Okay, I can tell if she left it on or not. I feel a lot of joy hearing that all of my colleagues are actually experiencing the same thing I did. It's exciting to see that collectively, we're experiencing a lot of joy and a positive start to this school year. So I wanted to give a huge shout out to my administrative team as well for all the planning it took to get us up and running successfully this year, and just have a lot of pride in our staff for really committing together and collectively to make this a really wonderful place to be at the start. Our mantra this year is together we soar. So we're Eagles. We got a lot of themes going on with our mascots. And we really, truly, I will say, have worked cohesively and together to really commit to an environment of welcoming and belonging, but also teaching learning routines early and consistently. And collectively, the staff have really taken pride in our building, in who we are, where we want our students to be. So that takes everybody working together. Our custodial and facilities teams have worked really well to take on projects that I asked them to, to just beautify our space and clean up areas of our building, and also just make our building more accessible to all. So we have some great new pavement in the front, so if you swing by, you'll see that it's definitely more accessible to folks. And if you walk the hallways, they're clean, they're organized. So that's all the facilities work that it's taken this summer, just to make our space beautiful. And then teachers are taking pride in their spaces and teaching kids how to take pride in their space by cleaning up after themselves and really making sure that we are doing what we need to, to have that collective pride. Teachers are greeting kids at the doors every morning. They're at the end of every day, closing with community circles. And so it's really made a beautiful impact to our school community. And it's been a really great collaboration with other departments, so I just wanted to shout out the multilingual department, who has worked with us to just clean up our schedules for pull-out programming and help us with new enrollments and other things. But Liza and her team are very accessible in a moment that we need them, as well as just the transportation team to think about how we improve our dismissal processes. They've been great collaborators as well. So we've started the year, we've had our first assembly as well, teaching kids that together this year, we're really going to soar. So we took our behavior expectations, and we made it come alive for students, and SOAR really stands for staying safe, owning our actions, which is around taking responsibility, acting kindly to one another, and respecting all. That's people, property, differences, that we come together, and school's a place where we respect one another and treat people the way they want to be treated. And so that assembly was filled with a lot of joy, a lot of excitement. Teachers, I think, are feeling a lot of joy and excitement. That's the feedback I'm hearing too. So it really has been a collective effort. I think everybody who comes in and does this work every day, it can be tiring, but teachers are coming in and they're committing to doing the work. So I just, yeah, want to shout out. I think that's the highlight, is staff coming in and doing that work and doing it together. So we really are soaring at the start. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So I, again, will echo what my colleagues have said. This has definitely been an amazing start to the school year, and I want to give kudos to the elementary schools. Kids are coming in, they're showing more perseverance, more responsibility, and more accountability for their actions than we have really ever seen. And it's just, it's really making a lot of the efforts that our elementary schools are doing come to fruition. You know, these kiddos went out in, for COVID, in their third grade year, so I can't help but think that when we poured our resources into building relationships and social emotional work, that it really has paid off. And we've got a group of really respectful, amazing kids. So we're loving that. A couple highlights that I wanted to let you know about, we started the school year celebrating the greatest math and literacy growth that Lewiston Middle School has had in a decade. So in 10 years this year, we've had more students meet their growth goals in math and in literacy. We're very, very proud of that. I also wanted to make sure you know about, and it was spoken about before, about our
about our collaboration with the Main Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. We do have a classroom dedicated just for, for those students and they're absolutely a joy to have. So we're, we're loving our collaboration with them. We also have a program this year. It's not just a STEM program that we've had every year, but it's a STEM plus M program. It's a full year program. The plus M, STEM is science, technology, engineering and math. And the plus M is manufacturing. So there's been a lot of research that there is a huge gap, labor shortage when it comes to manufacturing jobs. And so we have partnered with the Department of Education. And there are some businesses that have poured some resources into this program. In order to meet the guidelines of the program, we needed to change it from a trimester program to a full year program. And so that's the picture you'll see at the bottom left. This was about a half, half a million dollar program that has come into the middle school over the course of five years. So there are 12 stations in the STEM classroom. The monitors that they have are, are huge. And then they have all of their hands-on materials right there. The program will be for the next five years, they'll completely outfit us for everything that needs to happen in this, in this curriculum. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our collaboration with Next Step and Branches. This year, to start the year at least, we're doing an inclusive approach where all hands on deck. So they are coming to us. We're doing everything we can to keep students in class, get their needs met as far as what they may be facing, big emotions they may be having. And it's, it's going very, very well. And I wanted to update you on the bathrooms. I know this has been a topic of conversation over the past couple of years. We did make a few changes this year just to really tighten it up. But the way the bathrooms work is there is one bathroom, one group bathroom on each wing. So we have six. We have three floors and there's one group bathroom on each side. Those bathrooms are, any gender can use the bathroom. They go in one at a time. And we have a very visual process now that's really, really helped a lot. So one student at, at a time from each room. Each teacher has a big red clipboard that you'll see here in the bottom right, bottom right. There's a hook on the door frame. And so when a student needs to go to the bathroom, the teacher, that's like their bathroom pass. They take the big red clipboard. They put their bathroom pass on the clipboard and then they hang the clipboard on the door frame. So it's very obvious that there is someone in the bathroom. And so another student does not go in the bathroom at that time. It's helped, so far it's helped with a lot of traffic because there's only one student from each classroom that can go. And it's also made it very visible for, for students to see if there's somebody in the bathroom or not. I did speak to a couple of kids. Well, teach anecdotally, teachers have been giving a lot of feedback about this and they absolutely love it. We talked about it at Team Leaders today. And they've, they've given high praises for the way we're doing this. But one student, I wanted to quote her, she said, "I like that it is one at a time and that there's a very clear signal for if someone is in there or someone is not. It has been working and kids are definitely following the expectations." And I specifically asked her, "Do you feel like you have privacy?" And she said, "Yes, I do." Now, so far, you know, we haven't had any students say that they, they don't. We haven't had any concerns. Teachers know that we do have a couple, single stall bathrooms. We have one on the first floor and then we also have a couple group, just men's room and just ladies' room on the first floor. And so students are welcome to use those bathrooms if they would like to. Same, same kind of process though. We are putting some kind of a visual on the door so they know that there is someone in there. And I just wanted to end this part. Every, every week I do a thing called bright spots. And staff submit something that has gone really well for them. And then I publish them in our staff weekly newsletter. And I wanted to read this one to you. What was the best part of your week? This teacher said, "My kids, brand new seventh graders. They've been absolutely astonishing every single day. I've been consistently amazed with their behavior, their respect and their curiosity. They've been walking in the halls perfectly and other staff around the building have remarked how well behaved they are. Not only have they been great in the halls and around the building, but even in class." So again, thank you to our elementary students who have really gotten kids prepared for middle school.
Member Bowden?
Bathroom question, I'm sorry. So I, I know that it's currently like out of code with the state. So what are we doing to improve this to make it so? This might be a question for Superintendent Langley, but what are the changes that are going to happen to these bathrooms to make them more up to code?
So as a single use, I don't believe it's not within code. Last spring, we got a call because one of the doors was being main, worked on, something to do with a hinge, I believe. And it was off of one of the bathrooms from the hallway. And that was the initial call. We also have work in progress with LCIP funds that were approved in end of May, early June to explore how we might modify these spaces to have a, just a better plan. The building is so old, it makes it tricky. So that's the work we have to do this year around that LCIP. But Principal Bryant's effort to go to single use has stopped some of the other concerns that were raised last year.
The way that it's currently set up though, it's more than one stall correctly, even though one student's allowed at a time, there's more than one stall. So what exactly are we doing though with LCIP funds to like fix it so it's up to code? Cause I thought I understood something about they don't go down low enough to the floor or there's gaps or something that people can see in. Like, I'm just trying to get a feel for like what we're doing to fix the problem.
So the, the idea behind the LCIP is to work with architects to find a way to maximize that space for the best use possible. So we'd like to get to a point where it's not just single use, but to do that, you need different entry ways. And that's when you get it to the different stalls, top, bottom, how, how high are they? How low to the ground do they reach? Things like that.
Member Glenn.
At least that's my understanding. I'm not a code enforcement officer. I just, that's, that was the question that I got when the door was not on, which was back on that same day.
Question. Is there oversight, some kind of adult oversight to these bathrooms? Certainly this looks good, but still if, if someone wanted to go in there that doesn't belong in there at that time, what prevents that from happening?
I think we could say that about any bathroom at any time, to be honest with you. So this is a process we've really worked hard. You don't think we could say that about any group bathroom?
I mean, a group bathroom, but this is, this is supposed to be a single use bathroom, correct? But there's, there's no, but I think what member Glenn's asking is like, is there any adult supervision to stop someone from walking in there?
So.
But just can we do one question at a time? I think that would be.
So there's a door on the bathroom. If students want to close the door, they can. The, the main door, you'll see the brown door that's right there. That's the main door to the bathroom. I don't have hallway monitors. I don't have duty aids. So there isn't somebody, you know, right there at the door all the time, watching the bathrooms. But there are six, seven classrooms right there in that hallway. And I have to be honest, you know, students will do what is expected of them when they're taught well. And when there are consequences when they don't. We've had really good discussions with kids. They all want privacy. So it, we really have not had issues with this.
Member Eames?
I was curious about the LCIP timeframe. Is it this year that we have the money?
Uh, yeah. So the, the bonding is in the works, I believe. I see Bill nodding too. So we should, we should have access to those funds. And we already started the conversation as part of our facilities assessment.
The individual stalls, when it's single use, the individual stalls still have locking doors?
Oh, definitely. It's just like any other group bathroom that you may enter.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Jumping ahead of myself. Well, I actually wanted to build on something that, that Amanda said about the growth that they saw in the kids. And that is indeed also reflected in what we saw at the high school in terms of literacy and math. And unsolicited, I stopped in on the ninth grade team meeting last week. And one of our ninth grade English teachers said, "Wow, these kids can write this year." So that was a, that was a nice bit of unsolicited feedback. She just sent them home with a, with a journal assignment. She said, "Every one of them had a topic sentence. Every one of them had supporting details. It was really nice to see." So, you know, the, the systemic approach is certainly beginning to yield some, some great results for us. I did want to just point out a little, sort of end up with last year, that in 2025, we had an increase of nineteen, a little over 19% in the number of students who graduated from Lewiston High School. Now there is part of that that do enrollment, but mostly that is just more kids making it across the finish line. Which was in my time here, the biggest by far. And it actually looks huge when it's arrayed in front of the middle school. That was when they, when they did their tour around the district and, and certainly sitting, sitting on the, on the Diaz at graduation, looking out across the field. I was like, wow, this, there's a lot of kids out there. So that's good news. We had, at the beginning of this year, we had over a thousand students come in to attend Blue Devil Hello in the week before school started. And that's open to any student nine through 12. We also had a bunch of helpers there. Students who came in to show kids around, help them get their schedules, do all the things that sort of get them oriented for the start of the year. And we also had a very, very smooth start to the year. We had, on the opening day of school, we had 1,642 high school students in the district. It's a big number. Now that fluctuates obviously, but, but that's, that's, I, I believe that's about 300 more than when I took this job four, four years ago. So significant growth. We've also enrolled a student from the Main Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. Wonderful to have them in the building and they come with supports provided by the Main Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. So, you know, this is just one poor student walking around with three adults following, following behind them. But, you know, it, it seems to be working nicely. We have the second year of the Branches Program has kicked off at the high school. That's our partnership with Tree Street Youth. They are up and running. You know, we, we worked out some kinks last year, but they're, again, their primary concern is you got to get to class, you got to do what you need to do in order to get through your day and graduate on time. And so when you go in there, if you, if you, you know, they're, they're very good about ushering you out if you're not supposed to be there. And they're very good at giving you some support, whether it be academic or social, emotional, if you, if you show up in there and need that assistance. We have 300 plus or minus students currently involved in fall athletics. And we have 352 students who are currently enrolled in one or more of our 21 AP or dual enrollment classes where they can have the potential to earn college credit. So that's a great number as well. That's only juniors and seniors. So that's, that's a significant group. And we already had over 70 businesses already sign up for our Fall Aspirations Fair, which is September 19th, which is an opportunity for all students to, there, there are colleges there as well, but also employers from, from around the area, showing what opportunities exist for students. And it's a really positive event where they can think about some things that perhaps hadn't thought of before. So that's the, I gotta get in under two minutes. So.
I just wanted to give a shout out to my niece who made that Senior Sunrise poster.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The others, they were out there five o'clock, five thirty this morning. You got the Senior Sunrise poster and then the others are, they're unpacking tables and grills to grill breakfast sandwiches for their peers. So that was, I, I, I was not there. Assistant Principal Blay supervised that particular activity. But I, I'm wondering like, did they get up or did they stay up? That's always the question. When you're dealing with that crowd.
Member Glenn?
Yeah. I'm curious, what do you think the contributing factor is of the increase of, of the high school graduation rate?
I, I think there are multiple factors. I think that it is, you know, we're, we're sort of seeing the tail end of the, the COVID gap that they, that they went through. I think it's also staff are very much focused on how do we help students succeed? Not just put up barriers, but help them get across the finish line. We have had to reduce some of the supports that were in place and yet still more kids made it across the finish line. So I think that really speaks to a level of commitment in individual classrooms. The teachers, you know, wanting to help students achieve and, and get across the finish line. So those are, those would be two quick things. I mean, I just think there's also, as time goes on, a, a sense that school's important for, for many of the families who, who bring their kids to Lewiston High School. And that that's, you know, many of our students are arriving to us with significant secondary or school experience as well. So, you know, that, that's, there's a, there's a certain amount of, they understand how school's done and they want to do it. And, you know, what's the holdup?
Member Bowden?
Sorry, I have one more question. Since we just talked about bathrooms at the middle school, can you talk about them at the high school? Everything going good?
It seems to be, yeah. We, you know, one of the things, I mean, the, the, we have many, many individual bathrooms. And we do try and monitor time that students are in there. The, the larger bathrooms, the two group bathrooms by the, by the front office are monitored just because people are in and out of there fairly often. We haven't had a lot of issues. We've also learned that there are certain times of day when it's probably best not to have those available just because they tend to, you know, beginning of the day, end of the day, places where students end up hanging out. Staff are also taking the opportunity to use their bathrooms at the end of the C wing, which is sort of as far from the office as you can get. But staff members are being very deliberate about taking their classes on bathroom breaks halfway through. And so that they're getting a lot of use. So I think that has broken up some of the congestion. You know, we continue to monitor, we continue to try and figure out ways to sort of manage folks so that, you know, I think high school bathrooms have been an issue since certainly before I was in high school. So you just got to be, you just got to be around. I mean, really at the end of the day, we're in and out, we're around. And when we need to move people along, we do.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Still on? Okay. Good evening. I'm Rob Schmidt, representing LRTC tonight. We had a great summer. It started out with 13 of our students going to Atlanta for the National Skills USA Competition. We had a team of two take a silver medal in the EMT competition. That's, that's nationwide. Pretty incredible. We also had one of our CNA students who earned a, a summer internship at Vanderbilt in the medicine, in the biomed research department. I think you may have heard from him early in the year. It was really cool. He came into the office a couple of days ago, I guess it was late last week, with an eight by 10 photo of him and the whole other group in front of one of the buildings at Vanderbilt. And he was very proud of it. And unfortunately, Rob Callahan was not in the office at that time. So he's going to come back with a picture just so Rob can see it. So that was pretty neat. We also had, we hosted our first ever Maine Construction Academy in conjunction with the Associated General Contractors of Maine. It was a great partnership, very successful. AGC provided a lot of the equipment, I would say most of the equipment, using our facility, safety training, boots, hard hats, safety glasses. And they got their OSHA 10 certification, CPR, first aid. It was just really successful to see some of those students on graduation day and, and some of their parents and guardians showed up. So we're right now in the process of deciding whether or not we're going to do that again. I would, I would think it's safe to say that we will. And we mirrored that program with our own middle school construction academy, very successful. We opened it up to a couple of middle schools in the area. And it was small this year, but we're going to grow that. Very successful. Students ended up making some cornhole boards. They were very proud of. We're going to deliver those to, we delivered some at the end of the summer to Poland Regional High School and we'll deliver some more in a couple of weeks here. So that was really good. We also had our Summer Youth Employment Program, 25 students. I think you all know they get paid for that. And I will say with Jason Merritt and Rodney Boynton, running that program, those students earn every penny that they get. They work very hard for the hours that they're there. And they do a great job of helping around the buildings in the district. They're painting, they're moving things. They're doing a lot of the work that helps the facility staff in the summertime. So it's become a very good program. So I will also reiterate what a lot of the folks have already said. The start of the year has been very positive. We had an assembly, Blue Day Assembly, White Day Assembly, great vibe in the room. We took a page out of the, the LPS opening ceremony. I don't know who I should look to for this idea, but we had a raffle. Gave away a bunch of swag and students really liked that. Nobody came down like the Price is Right though with arms shaking and everything. They were pretty subdued. And I think that is attributed to the fact that they are meeting their. And I think that is attributed to the fact that they are meeting their peers from five other high schools, and they have not seen those students before. So it's all new to them. We kind of want to bring them together so they can see the other students and realize that it's just not the automotive program, those 16 students. It's not just the nursing program, but it's everybody. We are a school, where six become one is our motto. Excellent start in the sense that we also have another new program, our Auto Collision Program has opened up, and we've started that out with with, I think, 24 students, which is great for the first year, and a new instructor. We're still getting that up and running with equipment and talking to area businesses about what we need to bring in to have our students really get going and and start strong. We certainly will not be doing live work for for quite a while, in case anybody's wondering or needs it. You have to wait a bit. And I think you can see there, we're starting with over a thousand students this year. So a lot of great stuff.
And not on there, but this summer you all hosted the first ever car show here as a fundraiser, which had a pretty good turnout for our first time.
It had an outstanding turnout. In fact, a lot of the car enthusiasts and Rodney Boynton did so much of that work. I got to give him a lot of credit, but our Skills USA staff also did a ton of that. And we had over 70 cars here for our first time. We raised over $6,000 and we gave away prizes that some of the folks who bring their cars do a lot of the shows, and they said that these prizes were the best. They were all homemade. They were created by our staff. Bob Stewart and our welding department created the first place prize and big trophy all welded. And it went over very well, and I dare say that we will do it again next year as excellent fundraiser. Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you.
I had Karen refresh my slide because I almost made a catastrophic mistake and forgot to shout out the new floors at Longley. So bottom, so I'll talk about that in a second, but that was a near catastrophic mistake. It's also been a great start at Next Step and Rooted. We have our largest rising senior class ever with 32 students. A lot of those are new to us this year. And we got 20 across the finish line last year. So we're going to see if we can outdo ourselves this year. We just took our whole student body to a field trip at Camp Tracy, which is connected to the Alphon Youth Center. And 65% of our students actually went up the ropes course and challenged themselves in new ways. We never taken a trip that early in the year, so that was cool to do. With our partnership over the summer, LHS Rooted, Next Step, we all got together to try to brainstorm ways we could do an efficient credit recovery, given the budget constraints. And we served 46 students and helped them recover 50 and a half credits this summer. Got several August graduates across the line and helped a lot of our students have a much more viable pathway to graduation this year. Last year, Rooted returned 25 students, and they're hoping to return more through either this committee or out placements and things like that. The amazing floors at Longley, I'm excited for people to walk through them, vote on them, all that good stuff. But they truly are like such a facelift for a building that's needed it for a long time. And so we are just incredibly grateful to the superintendent, the facilities team, the committee for all of your support. Our students feel like they're skating on water every day. And then lastly, you know, every year, Next Step starts its year with making commitments. Next Step started with no name. We weren't in a building yet, we didn't have a code of conduct, so our students have built all of that. And one of our traditions is they come up with value statements every year. And I just included three, you know, I know this committee is focused on, you know, non-negotiables, unaccountability, and just this is straight from the students mouths, commitments they want to make this year. So I will tell my truth out of respect for myself and others. I will help our community and have each other's back, and I'll be open to new learning, to new learning about new boundaries, cultures, and new experiences. So we continue that work on with the help of you.
And Jen, did you want to share a little bit about the opening? And I think Liza and Kirsten also have something. Is there anybody else after that?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jen Tyner with Adult Education. I don't have a slide, but I do have something off the presses that I wanted to share with all of you. So our program in adult education runs year round, but we do have sort of an official start to the school year with our community education program. And what you're seeing in front of you is our brand new brochure. We're very excited about the brochure this year. It is using a new publisher, and you can see the flipped brochure. So on one side, you'll see Lewiston Adult Education, and on the other side, you will see Auburn Adult Education. So again, highlights the partnership that we have with our two communities. Some obvious changes in the publication is this is in color, so that's very exciting. It looks much more like a magazine. And if you open it up, the intent was that we are not organizing class by theme or topic, but by month. So the hope is that people will keep this for a while instead of putting it in the recycling bin and see what's coming up September, October, November, and December. The middle spread has information specific to workforce training programs that are available for both communities. We have 18 new classes on the Lewiston side. And while we have continuing classes for our multilingual academic workforce programs, we do spend a lot of time over the summer looking at our data and thinking about kind of our outcomes for the year. So I wanted to share some of our outcomes. This past year, we served 1,821. That was a number of enrollments that we had through the end of June. And you've heard me talk about this before. In the past, we we look at measurable skill gain, which is how our students make progress academically. And in the past, we've looked at an EFL game, which is our education functioning level. So we have a CASIS assessment, which is our sort of nationally normed assessment that we use to measure progress in our students. And historically, that's been how we've measured a gain. And every year, we've met our our benchmark, and we met it again this year. So we met the state benchmark for our measurable skill gain. But this year, the state added some additional ways that we can make those gains. And so we actually have now five ways that we can help measure student progress in our programs. And that is still with our CASIS assessment, so still with an EFL gain, with a high school credential. As you know, that we run pretty extensive programming for high school completion. High set subtest pass, passing a subtest now counts as a gain, as does earning a credit in our diploma program. If a student successfully completes and is certified through a state-approved IET, which is ends with a completion or a valued credential from a job, job training program, that can count as a gain. And then if we have a student who completes our program and then enrolls in post-secondary. So we have a lot of different ways now that we can actually account for student gains through adult education. And I did want to share that we met our of our benchmarks, we met the measurable skill gain, as I mentioned, with 42.87% this year. If you pull out just the students that we measured through MSG1, which is our EFL gain, we surpassed that state benchmark up to 58.79%. So that's just students making that progress on that assessment. We also met our 60% post-test rate for the state benchmark. When we look at our data match, that's where we continuously struggle because a lot of our students do not have social security numbers to be able to be counted in the data match. But we have made significant gains for those who are able to go to work. We have the benchmark is 90%, and our program has met that at 88%. So we're we're almost there. And then I wanted to also just share a few numbers around workforce programming. So our workforce enrollments grew by 177 enrollments through FY25 for a total of 396, and that includes sectors in healthcare, including our new phlebotomy program, banking, education, and the trades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirsten or Liza, whoever wants to go first?
Is it on? Okay. A lot of it's already been shared, so I will try not to be too redundant. So I will share that Farwell School is in full swing. I heard from our occupational therapist there, the is actually the lead occupational therapist of OT and PT in the district, in that they're starting to have all of their students participate in classrooms rather than pulling them out. We're servicing in in preparation of CDS kids coming and knowing that we need to start getting creative because it's hard to service, not service, hire for service providers. It's very, there's just not a lot of them out there. So we're doing that, and it's going very well so far, she reports. There was a lot of time and effort put into that, and it's thought, it's well thought out, in my opinion. Medca is doing very well at Farwell, and the classrooms at the high school and middle school, I've heard great things about it. There are other students already from other districts here receiving services. I don't foresee a ton more coming, so I do feel like we have the space and that it's just a great service for the kids to have. I had asked some of these APs to give me some information. I received from Geiger that there are three students that have successfully returned from outplacement school. So whether it be Margaret Murphy, Woodfords, ALTC, they've come back, they've transitioned quite well, so that's a good thing. We welcomed 12 new kindergartners into our program, Kline at McMahon, and we have a 13th transitioning in next week. So those are students that would have automatically gone to Margaret Murphy, probably, and that's very costly placements, and they are just going right to McMahon from the start and starting in their home schools or the home district. The middle school has moved day treatment to the high school, and that has gone pretty smoothly. We're rebuilding day treatment, K to 12. We have a director there that is rethinking the program, and we're going to try to design it in a way that is meaningful, like Kline was thought thought out and really organized in an intentional way. I don't think he knows that yet, but we're starting to work on those plans next week just so that it makes sense and it's done right. Trying to see if there's anything else that I forgot. Oh, the high school is doing transition planning, which is something, we have a transitions coordinator, so it's something that we're offering to the FLS students there and other special education students, because now we service kids to age 22. So it's how can we get them ready to be in the community that they're going to live in and service them? It's really focused on what their desires are and what their, a thoughtful transition for how they can better integrate into the community once they graduate from high school. So I think that's it for now. All right. Pardon my voice, we had so much fun during the start of the school year that I no longer have a voice. So the multilingual department has been very busy with lots of collaboration, a lot of what you've already heard about from the schools. But just to kind of give you an update on numbers, our enrollment is up and it is actively increasing. We ended the year last year with just over 2,000 multilingual learners. We exited 117 from our program, and as of today, we have 1,998 multilingual learners. We've identified 177 students as multilingual learners since July 1st of this year. Also, something to to really highlight and celebrate is there are 30 students who qualified for screening but did not qualify as multilingual learners because they demonstrated proficiency on the screener assessment, which is something that we don't talk about much. So 30 students were screened and did not qualify for our program. We have seen a wave of new enrollments since the start of the school year. Our office has registered 60 new students since teachers returned. And so we're continuing to welcome new families and get them ready for school and working with the schools to get their transition in and start a school to be as smooth as possible. And so we're continuing to to work, and I can't say enough good things about my my team, who has, we've all been working nonstop to make sure that we're we're getting our as many students in the schools as possible who are registering with us and getting them the supports that they need to have the start of the school be as smooth as possible. So that's that.
Did we miss anyone? Thank you all very much, each and every one of you, for the work that you put into making sure the school year got off the way it did. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's so important to our kids and our staff, so we appreciate you.
I'll give everyone a couple of minutes to empty out the room. Agenda item numbers. Sorry. Is it off? Okay. Agenda item number seven is to receive summer facilities project update.
Bill's going to come up and talk about a few highlights. Kevin sharing it on the screen for those at home. This is in your packet, but a whole lot of work was done in summer. Yes. So this is in everything that was done, but Bill tried to pull together a list of things that were kind of some bigger items. Good.
So I don't, I won't go through the list because you have the list and you can see the list up here, but if there's specific questions, I'm happy to answer those. We did go over in facilities, and member Glant was there when we went through these. I do want to say, kind of echoing my colleagues that were just up here, though, but that Summer Youth Program that Rodney Boynton and Jason Merritt run is really instrumental in getting things done, especially in the pinch. So when a classroom needs to be moved and a custodian, you know, maybe has already cleaned that floor or whatever, all these last minutes things that happen, that program has been indispensable. And those students did a great job this year in doing that. Also, want to give a shout out to Josh Bro and Ray Roy and their team. They did a fantastic job kind of coordinating these things. I did take a week vacation this summer, and as it was, you know, that Sunday coming back, like, oh, my gosh, we got to do this, we got to do that. And pleasantly surprised, you know, we had done a lot of planning, they had done a lot of planning and scheduling, and stuff was just really running like a clock this summer. The other thing is kind of a shout out to the building leaders because people are taking kind of more pride in what they want in their buildings. So that communication kind of happening between facilities and us is clearer. And and even I've seen some of my facility folks with big asks, while it seems like a big ask and it seems like, oh, gosh, didn't we just do something different? They're recognizing the programming that has to happen in our schools and and the needs of our students first. So that's really was kind of a nice refreshing thing this summer because I think the communication has gotten better. And and then obviously, you know, we always hit the delays at, excuse me, Montello, that was probably one of our most planned out projects, but we're going to be installing the final door Thursday afternoon. And that was just kind of one of those unforeseen things in an older building. They pulled out the door frame and realized that there were some structural headers things in there, so they couldn't remove some of the wood that was in there. So the opening was, they couldn't get the the door frame in the opening, so we had to order a new frame, and that comes with lead times. But but overall, you know, like I said, the summer, there was a lot of planning that went into it, and the facilities teams did a great job coordinating with the building leaders on what they needed.
Member Ames.
We heard over the years about the high school labs needing update. I see LMS STEM lab was updated. Is the high school somewhere in the?
Yeah, it is. So if you'll remember, we had the facilities assessment, that's ongoing. So September 20th, we meet with Harriman, who did that for the kind of final draft of things. One of the things that they were looking at was in the high school and kind of coming maybe with some options about what we do with those labs. One of the things that they were looking at was in the high school and kind of coming maybe with some options about what we do with those labs. All right. Thank you.
Agenda item number eight is to receive an update on student growth data.
So Steve, it's going to come up. Steve is our, he's my data everything. So when you all ask me a question, immediately I'll get back to you. My first call is usually to Steve or oftentimes already have it, just have to go get it. So Steve helps us with the data analysis. It's really critical to our, our growth goals and being intentional about what measures are working, what strategies are working and, and monitoring that. So we've, we've had some positive things come through and I, I think, well, I heard a couple of principals mentioned some different pieces, but Steve can show us and explain a little more specifically what we're talking about.
Can you hear me? Okay. So I just wanted to give you an update on our NWA map growth assessment data. So you may or may not know that Lewiston has been using the NWA assessment since about 2007. And then the state ended up adopting it as their state assessment a few years ago. And so I know the middle school and high school shared some exciting news. They were definitely some of, two of the schools that were the driving force behind the growth, as well as Connors and McMahon and Montello. So that was exciting to see. But just to kind of explain, I did give you some charts, but.
She had it up and then she lost it. I was trying to make it larger and then I lost it. So.
So while, while you're doing that, so what's really important to understand about the NWA assessment is kids are given the assessment in the fall and then again in the spring. And then what we look for is kids that are at the 50th percentile. They're meeting the expectation, but their proficiency really doesn't change. So we really need to see more students grow above that 50th percentile in order for the achieve, in order for us to really say that the achievement gap is starting to narrow. And if it's, if it's greater the other way, then, then it's widening. But what you'll see first is the NWA math data. So this chart just goes back to 2013, 2014. But what's really exciting is that 45% of our students did score above the 50th percentile, which is the highest since 2016, 17. And the top growth band, we need as many kids to be in that blue as possible. They're really starting to close that achievement gap. And it was 28% and more than doubled the post COVID low. And what's more important as well is that red band, that bottom one. Right now, as of spring of 25, it was at 32%. We really need to get that down around 15 or 10%. But it did decline by 12 points since post COVID. And it's the lowest also since 2016, 17. The next slide will show you reading data. It's really the same picture, which is pretty exciting. Again, it's the highest percentage of students who scored above the 50th percentile since 16, 17. That top growth band reached 27%, which almost, which is almost twice the post COVID low. And then that bottom band declined by eight points since post COVID, which is the lowest it's really been since 17, 18. One thing I just want to note is that it's, it's way too early to call this a trend. It's one, one year, but it's really encouraging to see after all of these years. And so hopefully we're able to keep up that momentum.
Remember Glant?
I may have missed it, but what does NWEA stand for?
It's the, I always have to look. Northwest. Thank you. Education Evaluation Association. So it's a nonprofit and they have a suite of assessments that they provide to schools. It's, it's a nationally normed assessment. And so we've been using the NWA for, for quite a few years.
And, and by nationally normed, it's also built on what they call RIT scores. But these are in comparison to everyone else in the country who took the test. So it's not just a Lewiston created, Lewiston gathered, Lewiston posted result. This is a national database, if you will. But also the state of Maine has adopted this assessment as their version of the main assessment. So everyone in Maine is taking this as well. Up to grade 10.
Remember McGifford?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm all confused about what, which numbers we're seeing. So these percentage bands are based on the score itself or based on the growth?
The, this, the data that you're seeing is solely based off of growth. And, and so the NWA has, based on the RIT score, they have the children be at the, they have a percentile growth. So 50th percentile is pretty much considered national average. So if you're below that, then, then obviously we're below.
But not if you're below that on one test, but if you're change test to test is below the average. Okay. All right. That was new to me. So, okay. And just a question about who takes it? Does every student take this or it's a selection or?
So that Lewiston has always used it for their local assessment. So it's typically grades, we used to give it in kindergarten, but right now we give it to kids in grades one through 10. The state requires us to give it for, give the assessment to kids in grades three through eight and 10th grade only. But we have always used it as a local assessment as a way to have a measure beyond, you know, tests and homework.
Okay, got it. I just want to, yeah, so yeah. Just the other thing I, I want to mention generally, just since a couple of months ago, we talked about, you know, how in thinking about the goals for the district, what's the best way to measure academic success? Is this kind of the framing that the district looks to for academic measurement? Or are there other options that you would point to?
So there, there's a number of metrics. Steve may have additional ideas too. Be careful with my words, not what I like about the standard access, but this is at least nationally normed. So I, I think when you have growth scores that are based on where kids were at, I think it's a meaningful measure. I think there are other things around the NWA that we also like, that the results can be used to show what particular areas kids are struggling in. So it provides you information, not just a score, but also the growth. There are other things too. I know that Liza would talk about the access test scores to measure multilingual growth. I think that's an important one. Then we have others like the, the NAEP, which is a national assessment, which comes at the end of the year. And it's a randomized selection that Lewiston always gets selected for. So we're, we're trying to put some good energy into that, but we do worry about test fatigue. And the state requires us to do the NWA. So we're required to do the access and we're required to do the NAEP. It's like, we've pushed back. I know my immediate team and the principals know that we've pushed back on the state federal government to say, Lewiston can't always be the ones testing. We're taking time away from teaching and learning. We have test fatigue in our results. It's just, at some point it gets to be too much, but I would say self-generated tests that talk about growth are tricky. I think you got to have it normed somehow. So. Stephen, I don't know if you have other thoughts or Karen?
No, just one thing I wanted to mention is it's, it's exciting that the state did choose NWA as their state assessment because it is one less assessment. So that's nice.
So in terms of accountability, I think it's important to note that because this is our state assessment, it, it, this is part of what the state uses to hold us accountable for certain things. There's a real push for participation and we have had to be on several plans with the state because of our participation with students either not completing the test or opting out of the test or not being in attendance to take the test. It's also what our comprehensive needs assessment for our federal funds, a lot of our academic data. This is the assessment and this is the data because it's normed and our access data, because this, the assessment is normed, it's allowed to be used to show progress or lack thereof within those assessments. So do we have other measurements? Absolutely. But this, this information is important for those, those pieces as it relates to some of our funding and as it relates to whether we're, where we stand within the state in terms of what supports we need in terms of plans and, and other things. So just wanted to, to clarify, to clarify that, which this was a reason for choosing this to share with you in terms of our growth, because this means with a year's worth of growth, we do have some changes in our, in our supports. But also our participation in this assessment is something that has caused us to need to, to go onto plans with the state as well. And we have schools working through that now.
Oh, remember Ames?
You mentioned that how similar these are. It is remarkably similar, the math and the reading. And I guess that is probably a measure of COVID more than anything else. That both in, in no matter which part of the learning schema, we're talking about the improvement, the, the, the depth and then the retrieval are similar on both.
Like teachers have been working really, really hard with curriculum fidelity and using data to inform instruction. And, and I feel like that's playing a part and what we're seeing as well.
Right. No, the teachers went through COVID too.
Yeah. Yeah. I think what I found interesting about us in the day though, is it much of it was the highest or most improved since 2016, 17, that era. So that was, you know, three years before COVID hit us, which are three, four years. So I think that's a, that's a window that I think is important to be considering. But when we set off onto this effort, even back in 2020, we said, we need to stop shifting curriculums and being all over the map. And everybody's doing their own thing and we don't really have consistent measures to know where our kids are at. So we've, I'd like to think that even with the school committee support that we have been consistent with, with here's the curriculum we're going to use. And we're going to continue to support people with how to use it, reflect on their practice, use that information to, to support the teaching and learning. It takes time, but now we're, we're in our, you know, six year COVID years behind us, probably maybe third year of really staying consistent with that effort. So our hope is to continue to push in that direction so that people feel comfortable with the curriculum and we don't just decide to change it up on them. I think that can create some longevity and we talk about things like staff retention, turnover, things like that. If we don't have a curriculum with the supports built in, where you can't ask your neighbor what we're doing today to get yourself off the ground, we're, we're really missing the, the effort and consistency. So really trying to drive consistency, but I'll say a little bit more in my updates. But in addition to some of this work and try to stay consistent, hopefully see a trend get developed, is making sure we have kids in seats and making sure that we're, we're doing a better job with truancy because we have too many kids missing too many days of schools for every reason imaginable. But we're going to make some significant efforts in that direction.
Remember Glant?
Well, it, it just really seems hopeful with the increase of the graduation rate and the increase of, you know, going above the 50% percentile. You know, it, it really brings a lot of hope within the district. You know, it's, I feel very hopeful and I haven't felt that for a while. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, did you want to comment on this, Luke? Sorry. We're going to open up to the public. Member of the public would like to speak on this.
Luke Jensen, Ward 2. I'm just wondering if this data can be repr- represented to go along with the achievement scores. Even on the NWA website, it indicates that the, I guess if I can back up for you, not really familiar with the NWEA scores. You get your RIT score, which is like the, the number that you get. And then from that you get your growth percentile and your achievement percentile. Your achievement percentile tells you like, based on the national average, how well the student does compared to that national average. So that's the achievement score. The growth score doesn't have to do with how well they necessarily did. It's basically you take one point to another point and from that starting point, well, you guys are backwards this way. It's comparing that peer not to, to all of their peers, but just to similar peers. Peers are scored similarly to them. So not to everybody just who scored similar to them. And then you get the score based off of that, how much you grow from there. So it's not everybody's growth together. It's just based off the similar peers that you're with, the scores up from there. Like I said, even the NWA website says that the growth scores and achievement scores shouldn't be looked at separately, separately. They're complementary. As a teacher, it's very good data to use. Like if you see a high growth but high achievement score, that's a sign this kid needs enrichment. If you see a low growth but high achievement, it shows that, you know, they're, they can achieve a lot. They're just not really being challenged. There's not much growth that's showing on there. That helps. He was a teacher. Okay, they're stagnant. What can I do about that? If you see low growth but low achievement, that's a clear sign for intervention needs to happen. They're not showing any growth and they're still much below their peers. Go for intervention. If you see like high growth, low achievement, that means they're still behind, but they're making up grounds. It's a good sign. You know, it's, it's not what we want them to be exactly, but they're on the right, they're on the right track. So I guess just looking just at the growth data, I guess that it looks good from that perspective and it certainly presents well. But I mean, we're way below our peers, like the actual scores that people look in and judge Lewiston for, it would be the achievement score, that actually like the RIT score itself. So again, the growth only shows from one period to another. It's only showing peers that are similar to them. So that really needs to be, you know, considered when looking at this data here. I mean, even at the end of last year, the teachers didn't discuss the achievement scores. We just discussed the growth scores because the achievement scores weren't that great. I mean, I, I've said this before about how standardized tests are just inherently flawed. There's no such thing as a good objective standardized test. It's just a snapshot of one day in time of one kid. The fact that we're testing kids below age 10 standardized is ridiculous. And the best schools in the world, mostly like Finland, Scandinavian countries, they don't test their kids until like, you know, age 12 or something like that. And so we don't need to be testing first graders. It does give them anxiety, by the way. Give them my fourth graders anxiety. It does give the first graders anxiety. They hate it. It's not reliable. I think I told you guys before once, there was a student that didn't speak a word of English and she scored better on one of the, the English NUI test than some of the native English speakers did. So they're not a great necessarily assessment. What I think do work really well, the F and P reading checks, those are pretty darn objective. And they really do legit show what a student's reading level is. And that's the thing we should be going after. I get it. We have to do the state testing. It's, you know, we have to do it. We don't have a choice. We're going to do it. But when we consider how we can grow as a district, what really should be looking at is how many kids in the district read on grade level? Are we looking at that? What, what was it this year? What was it next year? Looking like a five-year trend going back that way, that's the kind of score we should be looking at. And as school committee members, like we got a lot of good news tonight. There's so many good things going on in this district. And I remember when I was in the board, like five years ago, the, the big push was social emotional learning. It was, we have so much trauma, such a need for social emotional services in the district that we need to push that and that's going to help us. And we've done that. We've done that hard work. We have awesome staff members. We have great programs in place. Now it's just the time to really focus on academics and stop ignoring kind of the ugly sides of the district. And so look at, look at the reading level. Look at those F and Ps that we do pretty consistently at the end of every year. Those are going to give you a better indicator of how the students are doing in our district. So you guys should ask for a presentation on that. Also, I know there's been talk about doing some kind of like running records for math because there's no great like math objective test. And I really support that. We have great math coaches. They can really help out with that. And just doing like maybe a year end running record, even like beginning of the year, end of year. That way you can kind of track over time on how students are doing on state standards compared to the national peers, things like that. Are students where they need to be? Because the growth is great, but you can still get to high school and, you know, read like a sixth grade reading level and show a lot of growth. And if you think, you know, not, not every student has like a consistent score going up like that. You have these dips and, and the rises and how on earth did you get that high score and like dip there? And so the standardized testings aren't great. It's like we talked about the goals a couple of meetings ago, you should be doing things like running records, F and P tests. You know, something more objective than these, these standardized tests. Yeah. I mean, again, there's so much good that's going on in the district and it's to make the academic changes we need, it's not about spending a lot of money. We have what we need is just taking a different approach and rather than just letting teachers teach. That's, that's the probably the biggest thing I would say. So again, just, just put this data in perspective. Let's try and get it represented with the achievement data to go along with it. It's going to put a better picture. But at the end of the day, the NUI scores are more for like a student to talk to their, or teacher to talk to their student one-on-one. Say how you're doing. Do you need enrichment? Being challenged? You're stagnant. The data you should be asking for is, are students reading on a level? What's the percentage of that math? Do they know their skills on level? No, what's the percentage of that? Track that over time and that's going to help you with anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to push the mic off? Thank you. Agenda item number nine is a report from the chair. I don't have anything to report on tonight. Agenda item number 10 is the superintendent's report.
I just wanted to throw a few things out. One thing that, one, some groups we didn't hear from tonight that I think are key components to how our organization is running. Our, our IT and technology related folks. What you didn't hear this fall or so far to start the school year is all the things that are broken and not working with IT because they do such a good job behind the scenes of just making sure things work. So sometimes no news is good news from the world of technology and they've done a great job. Our human resources department to do all the work that they do with onboarding and our staff and.
and that the background verifications and things of that nature really have done a phenomenal job. Our business office with with everything from from payroll to budget implementation has done good. Transportation wise, I've, for the first time in my entire time as a superintendent, have heard positive things about the start of your transportation. And I hope I'm not saying this in vain, right? I'm gonna say it aloud. Maybe I'll regret it. I've not had to call you all in the morning yet this year and and I'm hopeful that that's very infrequent because we don't have cancellations. We things are up and running and and seem to be running smoothly. Each school has continued to look at ways to tweak it. We've made it an internal goal. And and Hudson's been a good partner. We're trying to make sure their trains are running on time and we're trying to do a good job of getting every kid that should be on the bus, on the bus, the right bus, they get home safe. And we're doing so in a timely manner. Our nutrition program is up and running. And I mentioned earlier about truancy. We we do think we're we're pointed in a really good direction. A lot of positive energy to start the year, regardless of what some people might say and always looking to improve and grow. But there's a lot of good energy out there right now and I think we want to harness that. But we need to make sure and I'm challenging everybody listening. Kids have to go to school and they gotta stay at school the whole day. You know, I get appointments, I get all that stuff. But the idea of, well, we're not just gonna go today because of whatever in the household. Let's get back to having that high expectation for our kids. Get them to school, get them to school on time, have them stay the whole day. I'm not saying overlook illness and I'm definitely not saying we overlook discipline because that's not happening. But attendance at school is very important. And if kids are not available to get that instruction that teachers are working so hard to inform and follow with good efficacy, then then we're missing these opportunities for growth, no matter what assessment we use. So I I think it's really important that we focus on truancy. We are taking some efforts that are different. We're going to be providing you with updates on truancy in an executive session. So you have a sense of which kids are missing which things. We can't say certain things publicly, but we want to make sure the school committee has a pulse on our efforts and also what are the problems we're trying to solve. And and with that, we've had some conversations this fall to get the year started with staff attendance. I think staff attendance is really important, but majority of our staff do have very good attendance. We want to make sure we continue to grow that effort. Just some updates for me. Start of the year is 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 rolling and we've really been hyper focused on start of year, establishing routines, positively reinforcing those and keep moving forward. But the routines are critical.
Member Boden?
Thanks. I just wanted to, since you brought it up, the truancy thing and keeping kids at school and stuff. I did want to ask, at the high school, I I see that there are no privileges at all in the first quarter. So I was kind of hoping you could speak on that and why that is. Like late arrival, early dismissal is non-existent right now until the second quarter. And one of the reasons I I think that's kind of problematic is I know that there's like a study hall with over a hundred and forty kids. I think I heard a hundred and forty seven kids in it. And so when you have, when you have that many students just sitting in a study hall that just, when they could, you know, they're seniors, they could go home. I'm just wondering what the point of that is in this first quarter.
So I, I wish John was still here. I can definitely get you more information to to bring that back. I just don't want to misspeak on it. I know there's some very intentional strategy around kids being on pace academically. So I'd like to bring that back to you or at least ask him to to provide more of an answer than what I might.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Thanks.
All right. Agenda item number eleven is a report from our city council rep.
So the city council met last Tuesday. Just a couple of highlights. We met the new youth advisory council members. Approximately half of them graduated last year, so we have eight new members. So that was great to meet them. We also approved a busking festival that will happen on Saturday, October fourth on Lower Lisbon Street, four to seven P M. It'll be, I think, seven different locations where people will be playing music or doing other kinds of performance. And then our next meeting is next Tuesday, the sixteenth. And the big item on there is the syringe service program ordinance.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve is updates from any subcommittees. No, no, no. Member Glant?
Yes, we did have a facilities meeting a week or so ago and it went very well. As you saw, the updates that were made, my McMan with their new roof. So that's good. A lot of good things happening on the doors at Montello. So there's, just reiterate, a lot of good things happening. Playgrounds are are getting refurbished and, yeah, so, so good shout out to the facilities people.
Member Ames?
You guessed. Yeah, policy has met and we are continuing to bring the policies up to date. You'll, I guess the next meeting you'll be seeing some of the recent results and it's an ongoing effort.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Agenda item number thirteen, are any community announcements? Member Boden?
This is kind of a different one. It's kind of fun. The Lewiston girls soccer team has been asked to participate in a commercial on Wednesday. It's actually for a bank in New Hampshire. So they will be leaving school at the end of the day and they're being driven down to New Hampshire where they're filming a commercial. The highway will be shut down for them and they get to pretend that they are state champions. I was, I can't even make this up. So it's, it's, it's a commercial for a bank and they were really insistent. They really wanted the Lewiston High School girls soccer team. I do not understand why, but they.
Do you know what bank it is?
I don't, I don't, I don't even know what bank it is. Do you, Jake? You don't recall? They are, the girls are each getting paid, I think a hundred dollars a kid they're getting paid. And there's like paid actors that they have to pretend are their parents. They're gonna jump off the bus with their gold ball and run to their parents excited. And so keep an eye out for whatever this commercial is. I'm actually pretty excited to see it. So I just thought I'd announce it because it's happening and it's just so bizarre, but very cool.
Okay, thank you. Member Ames?
So first of all, I forgot to mention that on Thursday I will be joining the Maine School Board Association regional meeting. So that's something I should have said earlier. But as to announcements, I just am part of this Lewiston Public Library Children's Library fundraising push. So there is another event, November first. It's on unicorns, dragons and mermaids, oh my, a mythical creature party. And it's from twelve to two. It's free, but donations would be appreciated. And it's in Callahan Hall. So just wanted to get that out there. Hopefully there'll be information available all around town about it.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Nope. Agenda item number fourteen is future agenda items. Member Ames?
So I am happy to hear more about the bathrooms whenever we get a chance. I am also wanting to end up with something about alternatives to Root Ed. Root Ed is wonderful. Not everybody in this town will go to a tree street thing. So we need alternatives to Root Ed for some of our students. So we got to figure out a way to build up some alternatives, even though it is absolutely fantastic. I'd love to get updates on unfilled positions and retention rates, as was suggested by one of our people in the public. And the truancy thing, obviously we have to keep on top of. So those are the things I would hope for.
Thank you. Member Glant?
Yes, I've brought it up before. Our phone policy. As my many of you may know, Portland has a new phone policy. It was on TV where they have these like packets or envelopes that the kids put their phone in and it's locked and they get it at the end of the day. And I just thought that was amazing. You know, the consensus is that it helps students stay focused, that it stops some of the interruptions that might be going on. So maybe we could look into that, what Portland is doing. Thanks.
Member McGlafflin?
Yeah, my usual agenda item, just like that goals document that we started to talk about. I think that would be good to bring back on the early side of the new school year, just to talk that through and see how we can use it for this year.
Member Boden?
Thanks. I'm, I'm curious about the F and P reading scores that, is that what it's called? That.
Fontis and Pennell?
It's Fontis and Pennell.
Yeah.
It's a score that teachers create through observation using certain protocols. So it's a, it's a teacher generated result or reading on grade level.
So is that something we could have a presentation on possibly? Yeah, okay. Because I'd like to know. I do think that's probably a more accurate measurement of growth with the reading portion than an N W E A.
Yeah, that can be debated because it's teacher generated, but it is a good tool and we do.
But I, but I do think our teachers are who we should be turning to for data because they're the ones who know our children the best and they're there watching their growth and they see way more than just the answers of one test on one day. They see creativity and they see a lot of things in our children that N W A tests do not show. So I just, if we could, I'd rather see a presentation on that. I think that would be. I don't know, I don't know the term, but I think we should do that. If if you could add that, that'd be great.
And the curriculum, sorry.
Might just suggest we could do that and then goals conversation at the same time. So I think they might go together.
Having been on the curriculum committee and being part of a lot of these transformations of the curriculum, that was definitely part of what the coaches do. And so if we could get the coaches in to talk about those assessments, it would be great. It would be very enlightening for all of us.
Anything else? No, okay. Agenda item number fifteen is to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by member Boden, seconded by member McGlafflin, all in favor?